Welcome to the Candidate Interview Uncut by the Snow Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'm Rob Watten. I have the privilege of interviewing three candidates vying for position five of the Snoqualmie City Council. With me is Dr. Kat Cotton, a recently retired veterinarian and longtime resident here in Snoqualmie. The candidates have been gracious in accepting the invitation to this interview without a lot of advance notice. They have not been made privy of the questions in advance. They're being allowed two minutes to each of the six questions. So let's start off. Dr. Cotton, tell us a little bit about yourself.
All righty. Well, as some of you know, I am a longtime resident, over 20 years, as you mentioned, here in the valley. I've been, you know, working as a veterinarian. I had retired prior to that as a paramedic firefighter. And lucky me, I moved in across the street from the old fire station when I first came up here and found out that they had a volunteer program. And that was almost 22 years ago. So I've been a volunteer with Snoqualmie Fire Department, doing emergency runs, teaching, putting on the pancake breakfast, all those fun things. And I've also stepped up and, you know, volunteered with the Arts Commission as a commissioner and co-chair. And, you know, it's just opened my eyes, all of these things, to what's going on in our city. And so this is really exciting for me to kind of maybe take a next step.
Excellent. Well, let me ask you this. The city's workforce largely consists of non-local residents. Should this be a cause for concern? And if so, what measures would you propose to address the issue?
I'm not sure that it's a cause for concern. I think the bigger cause for concern is the fact that these workers, including your firefighters and police officers and other vital city workers, can't afford to live here. To me, that's a much bigger thing that we have, you know, firefighters coming on shift, they're commuting from Snohomish. As we've all experienced and seen with the traffic backups that are so prevalent around here for various reasons, various times of the day, you know, everybody is commuting. And so that's something we have to address on several levels. I think transportation, transit, is definitely something we have to, you know, really get more involved with, if at all possible. Affordable housing, I mean, we all talk about it. I know you're involved with the Affordable Housing Task Force, you know, through the Chamber of Commerce, you know, looking for solutions to that. So that would, I feel that the people that live here, you know, if they wanted to work from home, you know, well, the pandemic, you know, put a lot of people in that position where they found out whether they could or couldn't. So that's definitely an option. Or they are, you know, commuting to their workplace. I think what we need to do also is get workplaces where people are still commuting into work to, you know, do, you know, the van shares and the car pooling and things where we can cut down on all the traffic on our roads. And, but get this so that people that want to live and work here can do it.
Excellent. Second question. King County is facing a $100 million budget deficit for the 2025 biennium. That may have an impact on what you were talking about, public transportation and the funds for the independently operated Snoqualmie Valley Transportation, which serves rural King County. How would you work to preserve or even increase funding for public transportation?
I think we have to explore multiple options. This is one of those situations or issues that Snoqualmie can't solve by itself. I mean, we're, you know, not an island unto ourselves. We need to work with other communities, other cities, other regional authorities, including like King County Council, which, you know, unfortunately, they have five urban representatives and only two rural, which would include us as far as the representation on there. I think we could probably learn some things from even Snoqualmie Casino, where they're doing some, you know, busing of their own employees, where we could, again, work with other sources of funding, whether it be, you know, Port of Seattle, like grants and things like that, you know, keep these, like these smaller businesses. I see the, you know, the little SVT bus around town. It's taking people to their medical appointments and, you know, grocery shopping and, you know, things like that, that maybe don't have their own transportation. So there are many ways that we can, you know, work to address that. But we, we have to work with other communities and agencies to be able to do that. I know traffic, you might hear me harp a little bit about this because the changes with Port Alliance, where now everything's going down to Port of Tacoma. So what? That's why we've got all the big rigs backing up here, which is so frustrating and has increased the number of very severe accidents that us as first responders are seeing too. So.
Well done. The Chamber works to promote economic development from job creation to tourism. How can the city work to make this a favorable place for businesses while balancing the needs of our residents?
Well, I think we can certainly work the two things together. Because, you know, the reason why people, you know, move here, work here, visit here, is because if you look around, the captivating natural beauty we have, we've got, you know, the mountains, we've got Snoqualmie Falls, you know, we've got trails for hiking, you know, all kinds of outdoor recreation. And so making Snoqualmie without overdeveloping, obviously, we need to preserve these, these wonderful natural things that we're surrounded by, is making this a destination point for people. And that we, and we're, you know, I think more and more people are checking that out, especially in the summertime where all the, you know, little towns have their, their activities going on and their festivals. But we, again, this is one of those things, we can't isolate ourselves. We need to be Snoqualmie Valley. And all the cities in it, along with Snoqualmie, draw people out here because if they come to visit us, or if they come to North Bend, you know, they're going to explore the other things that are here. They might decide to, you know, stay some extra time. The good news is, you know, is that the city of Snoqualmie will receive, you know, sales tax from, you know, revenues generated by visitors to the area. We, even in the Arts Commission, we're, you know, we're trying to roll out things to attract people here. We have so much talent here that, and venues that are here, the restaurants, the entertainment, you know, all of that. This is what the residents enjoy and what visitors enjoy as well.
Absolutely. All right. Dr. Kat Cotton, on behalf of the Snow Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce, thank you for taking your time today for this interview. We have one final question for you. Why do you think you are the best choice for filling position five on the Snoqualmie City Council?
Well, as I was saying earlier, this is definitely a step outside my comfort zone by, you know, running a campaign, so to speak. And when I say running a campaign, okay, it's me running the campaign. So, but I have a team of friends and a network of friends and family and such like that, that have really been supportive. I, the hardest thing for me is that you have to, especially as a first responder, because we're not used to kind of tooting our own horn, so to speak. So it's, that's the hardest thing for me to be, come out and say, I've done this, I've done that, you know, and, you know, look at me because I've done that. That is just not a natural thing.
You lead by example.
Well, you know, I think all of my colleagues, the other emergency responders, police, fire, and such, you know, do the same thing. We're, you know, we're not out for the recognition. We're in it because we truly want to help people. And so this is what I feel is kind of the next step for me, that maybe I can contribute, you know, now and then I get a good idea. And I love to listen to people. And this is campaigning has really promoted me kind of coming out of my shell and talking to people and getting their ideas and input. And, you know, our community has wonderful ideas. And we just need to get them all out there.
Excellent. With me is Dr. Mandeep Walia, an internist, medical doctor. The candidates have been gracious in accepting the invitation to this interview without a lot of advance notice. They have not been made privy of the questions in advance. They're being allowed two minutes to respond to each of the questions that are being posed today. Mandeep, let's start with you sharing more about yourself.
Yes, I'd love to. Well, like I said, like Rob said, I'm Dr. Mandeep Walia, and I'm running for city council position number five. I was born and raised in Washington and attended the University of Washington, where I obtained my degree in psychology. I then went on to work for the city of Seattle in the lower income housing units, teaching dance to children. I then decided to become a physician, and I'm an internal medicine physician with a focus on hospital work. And I am currently the medical director for the Program for All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly in the International District. We also own a surgical practice. We moved to Snoqualmie eight years ago and fell in love with the city. I have three boys, and we plan on not only living here, raising them, but growing old here as well. Therefore, it is important for me that I get involved with the city and ensure and take a proactive measure in ensuring that our city is resilient, safe, inclusive, prosperous for years to come.
Here's my first question. The city's workforce is largely consists of local non-residents. Should this be a cause for concern? And if so, what measures would you propose to address this issue?
Yes. So actually, when I've been going around and knocking on some of the business doors, employees in general is a cause for concern for the small businesses. They have a hard time getting our employees and retaining our employees. So one of the ways to alleviate this, which is part of the comprehensive plan actually, is to work on affordable housing options for our workforce. So for the police, for the teachers, for the employees. And this way, not only will we not lose employees because of commute, I mean, we, we're pretty far out there, but also be able to retain them. And, you know, on a health basis, you can actually walk or ride your cycle to work, which helps with our air quality. Because as a physician, you know, I'm always looking at things that, that affect our health too. So there are multitude of way, good, that will come from ensuring that our workforce is employed here and that our small businesses will thrive with, with actual employees. And just based on that, you also want to look at the fact that we'll have more high-quality trained staff that are skilled in certain areas, which will help our businesses thrive.
Excellent. Mandeep, the next question is, King County is facing a $100 million budget deficit in the 2025 biennium. That may have an impact on public transportation and the funds for the independently operated Snoqualmie Valley Transportation, which serves rural King County. How will you work to preserve or even increase funding for public transportation?
So this is a little bit of an interesting question. You know, I think our comprehensive plan actually looks into, you know, a 10-year plan where it actually, we're, we're working towards public transportation coming here and having more of it. So having a lack of budget, we have some funding already put ourselves towards public transportation. So, you know, so that's, that's one thing. I think at that point, you look at state and federal funding to try and get more money for public transportation. And again, if you look at getting your workforce here and affordable housing here, you're going to have less people needing public transport. So they will be, again, walk, walking and bicycling. And this may offset some of the need for such public, public transport further down in the rural, rural type areas. Because we'll have more walkable type things. They won't need to work outside. Majority of the time, they're going out because they need to work outside of here. So kind of ensuring we have more walkable type places and, and more job availability here. But aside from that, funding from a federal and state standpoint.
Excellent. Mandeep, the fourth question is, the Chamber works to promote economic development from job creation to tourism. How can the city work to make this a favorable place for businesses while balancing the needs of our residents?
So if, the city can help in several ways. I think one is by first going out. And it's difficult because actually, most of these businesses, the owners don't live here. So we're going to have to meet with them one-on-one and first find out what they need and how we can help with what they need. Number two, I think easy things. You know, let's have a free advertising for our businesses. So, you know, putting it on our website, and that includes all the businesses. And not charging any membership dues for that because there are some independent contractors are well, as well that we need to promote. Because as their business grows, they're going to create job workforce as well. Three is, is having a sort of a business-to-business relationship. So some businesses that may be thriving and other ones that have questions, this is a way for them to work together and get the other business to be in that same sort of level. And also, starting a small business office. So this will help with new upcoming businesses. So they will provide financial advice, how to get a grant, how to get tax incentives, and, and, you know, just help with small business loans. So this will really encourage businesses. And then, you know, for us, we want to have a more, kind of grow our business here. So like revitalizing our downtown and having businesses that are cater to a little more of, of the community.
Dr. Mandeep Walia, thank you so much. On behalf of the Snow Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce, thank you for taking the time for this interview. We have one final question for you. Why do you think you are the best choice for filling position five on the Snoqualmie City Council?
Yeah. So for the past eight years, I've been a very active member of our community. I reside on my Housing Association Board, coordinated an effort to obtain vaccines and inject our community. I have organized activity drives for the North Bend Regency and Echo Glen, and a clothing drive and goods drive for Syrian refugees. I have taught dance to the Snoqualmie children and for the Snoqualmie Parrot Association. And I'm currently working with the Mount Sinai Senior Center to try to obtain healthcare access to the seniors living in our affordable housing units. I tell you this because I want everybody to understand that I care about this community and I'm very passionate about this community. My background gives me a unique understanding of the diverse needs of our city and therefore I'll be a voice for all of Snoqualmie. My parents work 16 hours a day to raise us. So I do understand the burden of high taxes and access, high cost of childcare and extracurricular activities. As a physician, I know the importance of high-quality healthcare and behavioral health. As a mother, I understand safety, the concern for safety and education and, and that it's vitally important. And as a daughter to aging parents, one of my most important priorities is how we can help our seniors age in place. So, and as a small business owner, I know what it takes to have a business thrive. So all these things help me to be the best candidate for the city of Snoqualmie. I am a fierce advocate for our patients. I am a fierce advocate for my family. And I will be a fierce advocate for the people of Snoqualmie.
Dr. Walia, thank you. From the Snow Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce, I'm Rob Watten. Remember, the primary ballots are due by 8:00 PM on Tuesday, August 1st.
Thank you.
With me is Tanya Lavoie, a Legislative Assistant in the Washington State Senate. The candidates have been gracious in accepting the invitation to this interview without a lot of advance notice. They have been made privy of the questions just moments before they appear here. They're being allowed two minutes to respond to each of the questions. So first off, Tanya, let's start with a little bit about yourself.
I'm Tanya Lavoie, and I'm running for Snoqualmie City Council, position number five, as part of a new generation of leadership for Snoqualmie. I've lived in Snoqualmie for over eight years now with my husband, my child and our animals. And I was raised in a multi-generational household by two strong women. And I'm a collaborative problem solver and proven public servant. As a legislative staffer and former community organizer, I have experience in bringing people together and listening. And that's the spirit that I would bring to the Snoqualmie City Council. I also would bring my policy knowledge that I've, I've learned to bring better policy outcomes for Snoqualmie. You know, if elected, I'd really like to see us working with our regional partners on housing affordability, working to promote safer walking and biking, and preserving our open spaces. And I would love to earn your vote for this position. Snoqualmie is the place where I've chosen to raise my family and plan to live here for decades to come. And I'm really committed to making sure that it is a safe and welcoming place to live and work and raise a family. And, and that's, you know, my vision for Snoqualmie. And I hope that, you know, you share in that too, and would honor me with your vote.
Excellent. Thank you, Tanya. The next question. The city's workforce largely consists of non-residents, of non-local residents. Should this be a cause for concern? And if so, what measures would you propose to address this issue?
That's a great question. So it's not necessarily a concern, except for, you know, if there's positions that we would like to be hiring locals for, and there's a number of reasons why we can't, right? So housing affordability comes to mind if there's people that would like to live in Snoqualmie and they, you know, can't afford the rent or to buy a house here, then that is something that we need to address. And we already know that there's a housing affordability problem, not just in Snoqualmie and the Snoqualmie Valley, but really statewide. And, and so I think it's more of a question of not just are they, you know, non-local residents, but are they people that want to be residents here? I think another potential workforce challenge is access to reliable, affordable childcare. And that is something that I know is kind of top of mind for a lot of our elected officials. At the local level, we can be looking at our permitting to see how quickly it is for, you know, new daycares to be able to open up. You know, I have the experience where I'm literally waiting for a daycare to be able to be opened to have childcare for my own son. So that's, that's kind of just, as an anecdotal, even though it feels like we might have a lot of childcare in the area, it's, it's not enough when we have so many young families that we have here. And that's a challenge for parents that will want to be able to, you know, enter the workforce, be able full-time, not just part-time, or work at all in, in the area. And that, you know, might be folks that, that want to work locally. So I think that's, that's a couple of things that that brings to mind.
Very good. The next question, Tanya. King County is facing a $100 million budget deficit in the 2025 biennium. That may have an impact on public transportation and the funds for the independently operated Snoqualmie Valley Transportation, which serves rural King County. How will you work to preserve or even increase funding for public transportation?
So, I mean, one of the biggest things is for Snoqualmie residents to be loud about our needs. And, you know, as an elected official, I would love to be a channel for that. I already have developed strong relationships with our local council member, Sarah Perry. And I know that she is very open to hearing from residents. Now, we're up against a lot of different competing interests for that budget dollars. You know, the, the county has already sent out at least one survey, trying to figure out where county residents want to have that money go. And I don't know how well Snoqualmie turned out for that. You know, transportation is a huge issue because we don't, we already don't have access to the same level of service as a lot of other places on the east side, which again, affects the ability for the workforce, for people to avoid having long commutes, especially to have to commute in your car, which is, you know, an issue for a climate change. So I think that is part of how we can sell it to the county. And, you know, we've been loud about things before, right? We got a bus stop on the ridge, a covered bus stop when we were, you know, ahead of schedule for getting that because folks were diligent about asking for our needs. And, you know, if we don't present those to the county, they're not going to know that we need that. And so part of that is having council members with not just those relationships, but with political savvy to know how things actually get done and when we need to start asking. Because when you start seeing draft numbers for budgets, it's already too late to get yourself in there if you're not. So a few things.
Very good point. Tanya, question four. The Chamber works to promote economic development from job creation to tourism. How can the city work to make this a favorable place for businesses while balancing the needs of our residents?
So first, I think we need to recognize that a number of our business owners are also residents. So not forgetting about that portion of it. So, you know, one of the important aspects is our tourism, right, which obviously are very important to our city, you know, which was affected considerably by the pandemic. And while we're recovering, that's still something to consider. And, you know, our need to make sure that when we have folks coming in to visit the falls or the Thomas Train Day, that they're not just visiting those sites and immediately leaving, that they're, you know, leaving, that they're, you know, actually spending more time and dollars in our city and patronizing our local businesses. And so part of that is, you know, addressing some of those additional needs. So it is not an adversarial relationship. So noting that we're going to have influx of traffic and the congestion that might arise with special events. So, you know, looking at ways that we can be more collaborative with that and, you know, hearing from our businesses so that it's maybe things like shuttles to highlight some of our other destinations and businesses and restaurants in Snoqualmie, which helps to alleviate some of our residents' concerns. So folks aren't just, oh, I'm going to stay home or, you know, avoid the city on these big events because I can't get around, but that they're excited to show folks our city. And, and, you know, the other thing we touched on earlier, some of those workforce challenges and, you know, making it so that our employees that want to work here are not, are able to be residents of Snoqualmie. And it's, it's not just an either or and doing what we can to foster a, a strong business climate.
Thank you. Tanya Lavoie, on behalf of the Snow Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce, thank you for taking time to, for this interview. We have one final question for you. Why do you think you are the best choice for filling position five on the Snoqualmie City Council?
So once again, I am Tanya Lavoie and I'm running for Snoqualmie City Council, position number five. I am the only candidate with actual policy experience. You know, I've seen how not just state legislation and budgets are made, but also how that trickles down into local code. And we have some really big decisions to make, especially when it comes to land use and zoning, which are critical to housing affordability in the future. And I've also built relationships with key stakeholders and state and local officials. You know, I've been endorsed by our state and local leaders like Snoqualmie City Council Member Joe Johnson, King County Council Member Sarah Perry, State Representative Bill Ramos, because they recognize, you know, my effectiveness as, as a potential leader on our, our city council. I've also been endorsed by nonpartisan organization, the National Women's Political Caucus. You know, I am somebody who is going to, you know, do my homework and ask the right questions to be able to make informed decisions. And I think that's a critical skill that I've learned with my master in public administration, where I studied local governance and finance along with, you know, public policy. You know, I know that I don't know everything, but I know the, the right questions to ask, not just of staff, but of the public. You know, I've worked in constituent relations and know that hearing from our residents is just as important to know what, what you want and to be a conduit for, for your voice as we make decisions on the council. And I continue to be too open to that. You know, I'm somebody who understands how government can work and, you know, even sometimes when it's not working, how to improve it and, you know, really going in eyes wide open to the council to, you know, build the best future for Snoqualmie.
Thank you, Tanya. For the Snow Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce, I'm Rob Watten. Remember, the primary ballots are due by 8:00 PM on Tuesday, August 1st. From the Snow Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce, thank you for tuning in. We ask that you cast your ballot in this primary. We believe it is incredibly important to have your say and help the city of Snoqualmie find the right person to fill position five.